Some permits that are going to be presumably approved. Ordinance, that ought not to be an issue. So are there any declarations of conflict of interest? Are there any declarations of any discussions that you may have had outside of this meeting tonight or on an issue that we can anticipate that we will be voting on in the near future? Hearing none. Going on to the elected officials. The first matter is something that was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago, and that is that we are going to have very soon what is called National First Responders Day. And so I would like to make a proclamation, and then I will give the original to Penny because she's the one that brought it to my attention. She says, "Are you going to do a National First Responders Day proclamation?" I said, "Well, when is it?" And she said, "Well, it's the 28th." And I said, "Well, of course I am. Why wouldn't I do that?" And it's so apropos that we would be doing it because of Mr. La Forge, and he was a first responder. And as I've said, both of my kids indicated that because they both, the ones that were educated here, just loved it because half the time he'd have to leave, leaving them to their own devices. Anyway. Whereas National First Responders Day is designed to honor all of the brave men and women who were called during an emergency, and whereas the day of recognition falls on the 28th of October of each year, and whereas there are over 300,000 firefighters in the United States who are joined with over 275,000 paramedics and emergency medical technicians and over 600,000 police officers to make up well over 1 million first responders in the United States. Now therefore I, Gordon W. PG, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Emmett, Idaho, do hereby proclaim October 28th, 2023, as National First Responders Day in the city of Emmett, and I encourage all of Emmett's residents to look for an opportunity to do something nice for these brave public servants who respond to calls while knowing that their tomorrow is not guaranteed. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed this 24th day of October in the year of our Lord 2023. And it's signed by both yours truly and the clerk to attest. And there's the seal. So Penny, come on down. And you will have the official copy.
Thank you.
I'll have an unofficial copy.
Okay.
Would you like to say something to the folks about first responders?
Oh, we love our first responders. They are the best of anywhere. We all appreciate them. We all depend upon them, and they're always there. Thank you so much.
And we have so. Thank you, Penny. That was nice. All right. If you will recall, last week Tracy Howard, or the last meeting, I should say, not last week, Tracy Howard was here. I told her she didn't have to be here tonight. We can do the official taking of the oath some other time, but she's a very, very busy individual. And so at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to have Tracy become a newest member of the zoning commission by appointment. And to begin, it'll actually begin on the 10th of October, and it'll be for six years.
Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve appointment of the zoning, to the zoning commission of Tracy Howard as of October 10th.
10th, yes. All right. Is there a second? It's been seconded by President Nebiker. The main motion having been made by Counselor Henderson to approve Tracy Howard as the newest member of the zoning commission for a six-year term beginning on the 10th of October. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Well, this is, this is the favorite part of tonight's meeting. If you recall, and I know you do, way back in July of this year, on the 11th of July specifically, we indicated that this room would be renamed. And the reason for the renaming of this room is because the fellow whose name is up there, and we tried to replicate the kind of font that you might find on a footlocker or a wall locker in his athletic room. That's, we tried to replicate that, and of course, it's Husky Blue. You have to have Husky Blue. And what we said way back, we had a resolution way back in July, and we said that on the 20th of September, which was the third anniversary of the passing of Mr. La Forge, that this room would be known as the John Reynolds La Forge Emmett City Council Chamber. And the reason for that is there is only one reason that we have this building, and it's John La Forge. Had he not, had he not put his wife's money on the line, and, and, you know, the rest of her future, we wouldn't have this building. And it was his foresight, and frankly guts, that is the reason that we have it, and we will be forever indebted to John. And so I thought, I wasn't the only one. Several people thought, well, it would be appropriate that we would rename, you know, you can't name City Hall after him, but we can name this room after him because he's the reason for this room. And we just, we just got it, Mrs. La Forge was here today, and she gave her approval for the new decoration here in the room. And you should have seen the mess this has been for the last month. You would not recognize this room. But everything is up. It's running. And so I think, come on down, Mrs. La Forge, and what we're going to do.
I know, I know you know this is really different for me.
I know. I know. And that's why I put you on the spot. What I'd like you to do, first of all, if you would explain a little bit about your display, and then, I have no idea who that couple is, but you'll probably want to explain who they are.
I know them well.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the floor is yours.
Okay. Well, the display that we brought today was something that my husband felt really passionate about. He was with the fire department for, oh, gosh, well into 25, 25, 27 years. And like the mayor said, there was a little bit of discussion each time he left his classroom to go to a fire, but he really felt that that was important. And so about the last few years of his tenure there, he was named the captain. And as he, after he retired, before he retired actually, all of the firemen signed the hat, and I wondered a lot what I was going to do with that. I just, you know, and it was a perfect thing to have for today. And he felt very, very passionate about it.
All right. So, see, I think mine is going to do the pictures, so as they come up, explain them to us. Is it just mine?
Well, this picture was taken a long time ago. And John and I were very young, and we planned on going to our first New Year's Eve party. And I believe it was downstairs in the president café. It was in the downstairs part of it. And we were pretty excited to go because after his school years, we didn't do too much celebrating of anything. And so we went that night and just had a great time. This was another thing that John was really passionate about, and I think he actually got the passion from his father. He was a great hunter, a fisherman, and if John wasn't doing one or the other, he just wasn't happy. And, and so this picture is quite an old picture. I think John was in college at the time, and the gentleman on the left, excuse me, is one of his very best friends, childhood friend, Rick Carr. And the gentleman next to him is his father, Walt. And he lived, they lived here in Emmett for a long time, and he had a car lot, and I think he dabbled a little bit in politics. And of course, the next one is John, and the next one is a very, very good friend of his as well, John Furia. So anytime they could get away, they were, they were gone. And it didn't make any difference whether it was just a weekend or whether it was Thanksgiving morning, or because those birds were flying. This was a really fun trip. We went to Portland to celebrate a wedding of the daughter of a cousin of John's. And it was, it was a beautiful wedding, and Sarah was just a really pretty bride, and we spent a couple of days there. And after the wedding, we went to this park, and I can't even tell you what the name of it was, but it was a beautiful park, and we walked and walked and walked. And Richard, actually, John's cousin, actually took that picture, and we didn't even know that he had done it. And along with that, my granddaughter, Megan Anne, has a very, very good friend who is a painter, and she took that picture to them, to her, and she replicated it. In fact, I probably should have brought it, but anyway, it was a fun time. Well, these two guys were, yeah, they were a lot of trouble a lot of the time, I think. Dale Sanders was one of John's longtime friends, is, and they used to hunt and fish, and John got on the city council, and then I think a year or so later Dale got on. And they, they worked pretty good together. Dale had a little bit of a reputation as being a crazy guy, but John kind of settled him down just a little bit. This, this was just, I don't know if it was really one of their first fishing trips. The little gal on the, on the left is my granddaughter, my only granddaughter, Megan Anne. And Eric is on the right, and that's Jody's oldest son, Eric Dane. They had lots of fun, and Grumpy had a lot of fun taking them. Yeah, he did. Well, this is a wild group. These guys were kind of a lifesaver for John in the last years of his life. They would get together one day a week, I think, and play cards, and someone was always bringing a snack, or somebody was baking a pie, or, and they just, they absolutely became a really, really good group of friends. And like one of them said to me the other day, they were just like brothers. So I'm going to tell you who they are, if I can remember. So on the, on the left here is Pablo Rambrew, and, and I think all of these gentlemen were from Emmett except one. I'm not really sure. But anyway, Pablo Rambrew and Jerry Radent, who's here, and Lloyd Paul, and GW Lane, and of course John. Jerry Kider was an Emmettite, and so was Ronnie Legg.
Well, that's Jerry Kider there.
Jerry Kider.
Yeah.
Yeah. He was in the military.
He was my commander. He's put on a little weight.
Yeah. Yeah. He and his wife live over around, yeah, yeah. I haven't seen him for a long time, but anyway, he and his wife, they're really great people. Yeah. Anyway, they, they were just really good to John, and he, he just loved him and had such a great time. So this is the beginning of this building, the digging of the hole, and I think that's Betty. And is it Debbie? Betty Yates, in the red?
Yeah.
And is that Debbie?
Looks like Debbie to me.
Yeah. Yeah. They were out assessing everything, I'm sure. And the digging goes on. It was kind of an exciting thing, I think, for Emmett, even though they didn't really want it. This was, this was fascinating, to watch them pour, and then they put the rebar in, and, and that's a long ways down.
It is. And I don't see, well, never mind. I'm not going to call up over there.
Oh. And I think John is standing right there by that white, in front of that white pickup.
Looks like him.
Yeah. There might be, is that it?
Is that all of them?
Yeah. I just want everybody to know that new John that's here, he really appreciated and loved all of his friends, and he did have several passions in his life, and, and this was one of them. I actually was going through some paperwork the other day, and I found, he loves spiral notebooks, and I found a, something that he had started writing up, and I don't know what the timeframe was, but it could have been around the time that this was being built. He was, I should have brought it, but it, it was pretty long, so, but anyway, he really had ideas of how Emmett could be better and how the different parts of Emmett, the employees can work together, and, and that's what really makes it successful.
That's exactly right.
Yep.
And that's why we didn't hesitate to name this room after him, because it's, it's basically his model that, that we endeavor to follow.
Yeah.
So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to stay. It's going to be a short meeting, and then you can take that, or we'll keep it safe for you.
Why don't you do that, and I'll come tomorrow?
Tomorrow? All right.
Is that all right?
Oh, no, that's fine.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question for Ms. Cheryl.
Yes.
Who was on the council besides Sanders that backed John's play on this building?
Dennis White was one of them. Oh, gosh.
Tony G, was he there?
No.
No?
Uh-uh.
Was Tito Gonzalez?
You know, I don't, I don't think so.
Leonard Becken?
Tito was after that.
Who's after?
You know, it might have, was.
I was trying to think of who.
Yeah, I can't, I don't remember.
No, Tony hadn't been on there.
Uh-uh, no. That was, I think Tony was on after, after that. Yeah. Yeah. And.
With Sanders, I don't remember any of them.
And you know.
You should ask Dale.
We were three years.
Track Dale down.
Absolutely. See, and, and I, I tried to get him to come down, and no, he said no, so.
Did Farber one, right?
Dick Farber was one. That's exactly right. Yeah.
No, yours was a built-in camera.
No. This?
He left by that time.
Yeah, this building.
Uh, sure. Did I, what did we find today? Was it 2013?
We were gone. We left.
Oh, yeah, it was in, how long was the building? It was in 94.
Oh.
Yeah, it was like 94. Because I was reserving, and he was on the fire that because we were just ran, we were kicked out of the Blue Hospital.
Yep.
Yeah.
The Blue Hospital?
Oh, Mary Seacour Hospital.
Oh, yeah. Well, I was telling my, I was telling my, my daughter today that that, they were in that old building, and it had been condemned, and they were about ready to be kicked out, and, and so they had to do something. Yeah. Thank you, anyway.
All right. Thank you. We wanted to wait until we had this place sploosed up before.
It looks great.
Before we did the official thing. All right. Does the council have anything good of the order or anything of that nature? Hearing none. Let's go on to the consent agenda. It's the approval of the minutes for October 10th, the joint meeting with the Gem County Commissioners, as well as the regular council meeting, the approval of the council payable, and Counselor Butler helped out today with that, and then the approval of bartender permits for Melissa Adams, Lane Sandall, and Taryn Shemwell. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
All right.
Second.
All right. Thank you. The main motion has been made by Counselor Resinkin to accept the consent agenda as presented, and that was seconded by Counselor Butler. Is there any discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Let's go on to the approval of the lighted horse parade. Is Heather here?
Doesn't look like that, Mayor. I'll have one.
Are you playing the part of Heather?
I'm playing the part of Heather.
All right.
Are we going to flip this around? That's really good.
You don't want to face the audience?
Oh, I'd love to.
How's that? Does that suit you better?
Yep. That's great. Thank you.
All right, Mayor, I'm just here to get approval for the escort slash parade, horse-lighted parade on December 9th at 4:00. And this year, I have increased the amount of officers that will be dedicated to it. Last year, we did use, I believe, four. I only asked for two last year, but I needed more than that, so four is what the number is here this year.
What time did we do it last year?
4:00.
Was it four?
Yep. Yep. I believe that's true. I remember we start when it's light, and it gets dark near the end.
Is there a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the lighted horse parade for December 9th from 4:00 p.m. with the Emmett Police Department doing the escort.
Second.
The motion has been made to approve the lighted horse parade on 9 December at 4:00 p.m. with Emmett Police Department escort. That was made by President Nebiker, and it was seconded by, did I hear you, Counselor Henderson?
Sorry.
Well, I know, but I heard.
It's stereo.
So I'm going to give, I'm going to give it to you, Counselor Henderson, yes, because I want to get you in the minutes. Your name will be in the minutes.
She hits hard.
All right. Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next one is approval of ordinance O. 2023-19, an ordinance of the city of Emmett, Idaho amending Title VII, Chapter 1, Article A, Section 5, Sidewalk Obstructions, and Providing an Effective Date.
And this is just continuing on with changing the ordinance from misdemeanors to infractions, and as you see, the misdemeanor is struck, and then it goes to the section where it, in that section, it actually says first offense is $100 infraction, second offense is $300 infraction, and then the third offense would be a misdemeanor.
I'm not so sure all of our infractions shouldn't be that way. Just putting it.
Well, all the, all the ordinances are, yes.
Yeah.
I got you. I understand what you're saying.
All right. Any questions for the chief? If none, the chair will entertain a motion, and if you want to do that being read once by title, that's okay by me. In fact, I encourage it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number O. 2023-19, also move to dispense with the rules requiring the ordinance be read on three separate dates and once in full, and that read once by title.
Second.
Main motion has been made by President Nebiker to approve ordinance O. 2023-19 and to dispense with the rule requiring ordinances to be read on three separate days and once in full, and that the ordinance be read once by title. And it was seconded by Counselor Henderson. Is there any further discussion? We're ready for the question. It'll be yea or nay. President Nebiker?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Harris?
Yea.
Hey, Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Counselor Resinkin?
Yea.
Counselor Sorensen?
Yea.
Yea. Six yays. Motion passes unanimously. If you would do the honors of reading it once by title.
An ordinance of the city of Emmett, Idaho amending Title VII, Chapter 1, Article A, Section 5, Sidewalk Obstructions, and Providing an Effective Date.
All right. Chair will now entertain a motion after the first and only reading to have it published.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O. 2023-19, direct the mayor to sign, and direct that it be published by summary.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Main motion has been made to approve or to accept the first and only reading of ordinance O. 2023-19, directing the mayor to sign, and directing it to be published by summary. And it was seconded by Counselor Butler. Any further discussion? President Nebiker?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Harris?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Resinkin?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Sorensen?
Yea.
Yea. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Chief Christiansen?
Brought back up tonight, so. We're looking for approval for a memorandum of understanding with ITD. It's for our car seat program. We've been doing that for the last.
We're in our fifth year.
Fifth year. So offering car seats to people that can't afford them, or if there's a car accident, we can get them a new car seat on the spot. So brought Lindsay with me. She's the one that's been heading up the program for the last four and five years, something like that. So if you have any questions about the car seat program, she's.
Lindsay, I want to take something to ground here. Your chief explained this morning at the Dirty Bird Meeting that the initial training takes about a week to learn how to install a car seat.
It's 24 hours. I thought I could bring my two living children as proof that I knew how, but turns out I'm lucky they're alive. And 24 hours of training, and I know a lot more about car seats than I did through raising my kids.
And we expect parents to slap these things in?
And they change all the time, and every manufacturer is different. There's nothing alike about any of them. Yeah. And we, we can offer seats to people that don't have them, but also people that have questions and don't understand how their seats work. We set appointments for them to come in, and we teach them all about that, make sure they're compatible with the vehicles they drive, and, or if grandma takes them to school, we get grandma a car seat so they're not switching if they don't need to. But it's been, it's been really great and really successful, and we've had high school students come in the last two years and do their senior projects with us. We have to, we're required to complete certain amount of continuing education credits every two years and retest, and we have to have a certified person come in and check us install six seats to make sure we're up to par and do an event. So high school kids have come in and done their senior project where they help host an event and do car seat inventories and help us through that, which has been good for the community. for the community and, and a boost for the car seat program. They've had a good time kind of advertising that for their side, too. So it's something we've been doing for this long, they just wanted to make it official with ITD and have it in writing.
Now, as I understand it, we're one of only three cities in at least southwest Idaho that's actually doing this. I believe it's Meridian, Kuna, and us, is that true?
Uh, yeah, Weezer was the other one that we came up with.
Weezer?
Yeah, so not a, it's not by any means a set thing that because you have a fire department, you have a car seat program. And, and when we keep up our end of the bargain and we're a certified car seats inspection site, then that's what enables us to get the free seats. So ITD, I can put in a request and they just drop them whenever we need them.
And so that's where they come from, is ITD?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, that's great, and I really appreciate you taking the time.
Yeah.
Out of your busy day to, to honcho these, these projects when we have them.
Yeah, happy to do it, and it's, I'm certified, and then there's two other firefighters also at the department that are certified, so we, we just make it happen when it works for people.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Lindsey? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that the, we sign and approve the understanding agreement, memorandum of understanding with ITD and the city of Emmett for this seat belt program.
Car seat.
Car seat.
Well, seat belts involved.
Yep, always.
And it's been seconded by Counselor Harris. All right, main motion has been made by President Nebiker to approve the memorandum of understanding with ITD and the city of Emmett for the car seat program, and the second was made by Counselor Harris. Is there any further discussion, debate, or comments? Hearing none. President Nebiker?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Butler?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Harris?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Henderson?
Yea.
Counselor Ruzinkin?
Yea.
Yea. Counselor Sorensen?
Yea.
Six yays, motion passes.
Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now time for activity reports. Did you go hunting yet?
I leave in tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
For the.
What are you hunting for, Sasquatch?
Deer and then elk on, starts on Friday.
Oh. Happy hunting.
Well, thank you, sir. You all have my reports tonight, are there any questions for me? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Non-courting.
Hello, do you have anything for me?
Mayor?
Oh, boy.
City Hall is great.
Thank you.
You did a great job on this.
Thanks. Yeah, turned out pretty well.
Yes.
Really like, I really like it.
Don't look at the carpet directly, though, because it will, it will hypnotize you.
Take it vertigo when you look.
Yes.
Mayor and council, you've been copying my report, are there any questions?
Mayor?
I'm not going to discuss that.
I was, you were.
Sorry, all respect, yes, I took second this year. Michael Geary took first place.
Which one was he?
B, so that was towards the other end, so. He won it fair and square.
He stuck you one up in far corner.
I was, I was D, I was on the other end, so. It was a, it was a close.
Well, yours, listen, yours had a great finish.
It finished second, you know, so, yeah. But thank you, thank you.
I must say also, A, Kurt of the sinuses.
Oh, good. Yeah.
It was warm.
It was a very successful event, we raised quite a bit of money for the burnout fund, and also there's a project that we're, we're working towards to prevent, to ward off some cancer inside the fire department, and so this was an amazing event. We showcased a lot of great things in the report, I believe it's in there. We were able to install quite a few car seats for people. At least nineteen people were, were trained in hands-only CPR, and we made a lot of happy people, they, we really showcased the excellence that Emmett Fire is, so.
I'm sorry I missed it.
Oh, no worries, no worries. We'll do it again next year, so.
I promise I won't have surgery next time.
Nope, understand.
Well, I don't know.
I felt guilty eating all some chili.
All right, thank you.
Chief Gunka.
Mayor and council, I would like to take this moment just to thank a couple people in the room that assist us with ordinances. As you noticed today, it was a simple one. Thanks Jake, I think he changed a word or two. Just recently, though, my officers came up to me and said that the curfew ordinance that was online was incorrect, and there was a time that was not right. It said ten o'clock instead of eleven o'clock. Initially, like always, I think, oh, what did I do wrong? So I looked at the ordinance that Jake would send to me, and I noticed that that was correct. It did state eleven o'clock. So then, once it gets to me, then it goes to Lyleen, so then I have to check the email that goes to Lyleen, and that was correct. Then once we get to Lyleen, then we got to see what Lyleen sent to the actual codifier, and then she noticed that that copy, she had. I think you had two copies, maybe, and we saw which copy, and then that was correct. So then we eventually had to contact the codifier, and they were the ones who made the error. Not us, Jake, so it wasn't, wasn't us.
Really passed the buck down the line there.
Yeah.
So do we get our money back?
Yeah, yeah. Which is also amazing, just a year ago, or when we started doing this, it took, I think it was a year, and then they changed it to six months, so it took a year before they actually changed it online. Then it was six months, but after many phone calls from Mr. Rome, now it happens like before we even get to council. So I don't know what you said to them to get that accomplished, but thank you. Thank you, guys, for helping out. Counsel, mayor, you have anything?
Mayor? So, chief, on the bottom, I see here that, I don't know if it, type of, what it says, add a part-time code enforcement position in your report. Part-time or full-time?
Part-time.
It's going to be part-time?
That was part-time that we, we passed, yes. Yep.
Has it gotten accomplished yet?
We have not filled that role yet. We are putting an officer in those hours, though, and he'll get extra hours to accomplish that. So we are moving towards and having a person there, but we have not gotten a new position yet, no, new person.
Okay, thanks.
All right. We wore out Clint Siemens last week and this week, so I gave him the night off.
Okay.
He's online.
Are you online, Clint?
Yes, sir.
All right, you have anything to say?
Only if the council has a question for me.
Nope, they don't.
No.
Go back to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go back to.
We have an alibi that was underneath a.
What?
Sorry, apologize, mayor, council. We wanted to talk about the active shooter training that we just had at the fairgrounds, and it's one of those low-risk, or low-frequency, high-risk events with no time to think, when you have somebody that's inside a, a building, or God forbid, ever a school. So you don't really, you have to train exceptionally hard. So my department, we've trained a total of three months of our time on something like that. House fires are kind of like a high-frequency, you know, high-risk event, so we're, we're really good at those, but when you come down to things that you don't respond to ever, you have to be, you have to have a really good training program, and so over the last three months, we've trained to, and we've equipped our firefighters with new equipment in order to, and PDs equipped their people as well, in order to respond to this. So the objectives are to stop the killing, and then stop the dying, and then move patients to definitive care. During this training, we, I didn't set my team up, because I know that you can affect the outcome if you walk them through each step, like, hey, I'm going to go here, you're going to come here. We didn't do any of that, we just said, we're going to respond to this event, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to do the best with what we've got, but we've already been training for two and a half months on this, and so there's a lot of hiccups, and it was really great, but we were still able to accomplish the mission in fifteen minutes of moving five patients out of a, a place where there was effectively someone killing, get that person neutralized, and get them over to definitive care. So it was, it was a little rough as far as the training, but that's exactly what we've wanted. We want to work those things out there, but the, it did not hinder us getting it done by a standard, and so I just wanted to kind of talk a little bit about that, I don't know if you have anything to add, but.
I do have two things to add. First of all, the one thing he didn't explain, and I know we've done this already, is that we actually had a training, by the alert training that came here, and it, and it gave instructors to both the fire department and my department. Dispatchers went to that training, county fire has instructors and also went to that training, so a number of entities inside the county and the city are now instructors on that. Second of all, Kurt said that his people weren't prepared. I actually told Lieutenant Huff about it on Sunday, that he was going to be in charge that day, and that I was going to be yellow, wearing a yellow vest. So he was not prepared at all, and hadn't been involved in the walking or the crawling, nor had he been involved with the actual instruction or the training initially. So you will get those times, obviously, especially when we have new staff, we don't, we're not able to have the time to get them caught up with absolutely everything and anything. Now, Post does have this training, the alert training, included in their academy now, and Sergeant Huff, or Lieutenant Huff, has actually attended the alert training, but not the instructor training that recently was in May or this past summer. So it was good to see how prepared he was, even though he was unaware of the event and had not been crawling and walking prior to that.
If, if this would have been a Sandy Hook, like if it would have happened, if that was Sandy Hook we were responding to, or Uvalde, or any number of those incidents that happened, we would have been, we would have looked like pros out there doing it. Just because the level of education that we received from the alert, then thank you to your Officer Letterman for bringing that to us, but we have to coordinate together. There was seven entities that were involved in that, we had St. Luke's, St. Al's, we had StateCom, we had the four agencies here all participating together, so.
So you made a bridge call?
We did do a bridge call, we did everything, so. When you start combining seven agencies together to do one drill, it was, it was impressive to see, you know, the two of us were pretty much the ones that were getting this going, but we didn't want to give, even though it was at the fairgrounds, we didn't want to give it up, you know, because that would be kind of unfair, we've been the ones doing this from the beginning. But I'm sure, you know, county fire would have done great, and I'm sure the sheriff's department would have done great, but we, we were really impressed at the level of coordination that we had with, with seven agencies coming together to, to keep people from dying, so.
How often is the frequency going to be for full-out, full-up training as you go to work?
So, for my department, we were talking about it last night, we did a hot wash last night, and there's a lot of interest in this. Yeah, we'd like to fight fire, we'd like to cut cars apart, we like to do all those types of things, but then again, we're, we're well-trained on those, those types of tasks. When you come down to, like I said, the, the low, the low-frequency, high-risk, with no time to think, you have to train extra hard, and so there is a huge level of interest. One of, Bobby Dunbar, one of my firefighters, like, we need to train more on this. I'm like, dude, we just spent three months on, on this, you know, he's like, we need to spend more time on it. So we are going to do quarterly, quarterly drills, just like we do a quarterly hazmat drill, we do a quarterly, or not, yeah, we're going to do more on this, so that's the frequency in which we can expect to do it, because we want to be prepared for, we, we pray that it never happens to our community, but that's, we don't build our plans off of, I hope it doesn't happen.
Now, you've had, what, three full-up hazmats?
Ooh. I can't remember how many, we've had at least three, yeah.
And on the law enforcement side, we have yet to get all of the county deputies, nor the Emmett officers, all caught up to speed, so we'll be training everybody. I believe Valor, didn't they say that they had to have so many exercises in a year, and that one of that, this was sufficient for one of them? And in my mind, I was thinking we need to have one of these a year, at least, one of these exercises a year, including everybody. Also, one person we left out is that we did have role players, and they was, they were from Calvary School, the academy, and they came and they used fake blood and did all the, not the screaming and yelling, more of the moaning and I'm hurt type thing, but yeah, it was, it was good.
And we did transport all those patients over to Valor Health to help them complete their exercise, because they wanted to have like a surge of patients hit them, and so we were able to accomplish that for them, so that was, that was a win on all levels. And we took a lot away, I mean, I'm, I have notes, and we talked really frankly with all the people that participated in this, and yeah, there's, there's more to go, but we are really far along.
Did you have the kits, like the compound, complex fracture, open chest wounds, sucking?
Well, you know, some of these pieces of equipment expire after time, you know, some of the chest seals that we use in EMS, some of those things expire over time, so we were actually using expired, you know, medical devices to, to use, and we since have replaced all the expired ones, which they were already replaced, by the way, so. But we use those on our fake, fake patients, I guess.
They did have some of those scars that were supposed to represent that, they also had papers on them that said what their wounds were, and relaying that information from the law enforcement to the medical side and making sure they knew who was what, what was wrong with them.
Sounds like an excellent program, you're being commended for carrying it out.
Yeah.
Questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
One question, before you started on this program, I asked one question about vests. Are you guys able to get them?
That's, that's a great question. So the way that this program works is we work inside a warm zone. Ninety-eight point five percent of the time, that's the statistic, I didn't just make that up, ninety-eight five, ninety-eight point five percent of the time, there's going to be a single shooter, or there's going to be two, but they're going to be co-located together. So when law enforcement goes in, if they take out two people in one area, or they take out one person, that's that ninety-eight point five percent of the time. When we go in, we go in with two, two blue and two red, and they're our security. Now, if something happens, then we get, we get low and we get out of the line of fire, and we trust our law enforcement partners to neutralize any hazard that may exist, bad guy with a gun. So there's really not a huge need to invest copious amounts of money into body armor. If we've, there are some places like Canyon County that has a SWAT team, and they do have trained paramedics to stack up with officers to go inside into hot zones, but our thing is, we treat it just like a hazmat, there's the cold zone, which is where I, where the fire chief will be and the police chief will be, but then there's a warm zone where there's people in need, but the threat has been neutralized. It doesn't mean that the, the warm zone can't turn into a hot zone again, but the statistic tells us that it's, it's going to be a safe place, because I, I look out for my firefighters, and I want them to make it home, too, but we, we've talked about it, but there's money, and we've talked about expired vests, but then there's, there's that end of it, and I'm just not totally comfortable with an expired vest, and I'm sure our legal department and ICOMP wouldn't necessarily be happy with, with expired vests and stuff like that, they do go out of date.
And chief mentioned, it's five years, chief mentioned the, the new way of doing it, and yes, they train EMS with the SWAT team, and they have vests and go in, and sometimes they also have firearms with them. The old process used to be, we don't have enough people, so hey, you firemen over there, here's my gun, come with me, and we'd throw a vest on that guy, because that's all we had, and that was the mentality then, but now the mentality is to train that guy first to be that guy with you, and then you would get that equipment for him. But it's very important to understand the, the warm zone and the hot zone, and we do not bring them into an area where there's, there's still killing that's going on.
Yeah. To equip our firefighters would be quite, quite expensive, I know that there's always extra money at the end of the year to just throw around, right? No, there's not.
No.
So we've got to be good stewards with that, with that resource, and so we, between the chief and I, we've talked about it, we've been down that road, and this is, this is and this is what we're comfortable with, that we're going to trust our law enforcement to neutralize, to take care, to make sure it's a safe place. But we're not going to get in there and expedite getting patients to definitive care as quickly as possible and that was 15 minutes that day, so... Which is very fast, by the way.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Mayor, I wanted to ask you about... I understand that... It's not about the shooting, but it... I don't know who all was involved, but I understand the day that there was the gas explosion in Middleton, that we had our own gas situation at a school?
Oh, yes.
And I just was curious. I'd heard some. I would like to maybe have you tell me or tell us how you guys handled that, that maybe, from my understanding, not all communities would be able to have handled it the way that ours did.
Yeah, in fact, Lindsey's probably the best person to answer this one. So we don't like to leave things unresolved. I mean, we just have like this thing about, you know, well, it's probably taken care of. We can't detect any gas or anything like that. Yeah, it's kind of smells in here a little bit, but maybe that's sewer gas, you know? I'm sure you've probably heard that many times. But Lindsey was like a... Like she was just on it and she was like, I'm going to find out where this is coming from. You know, three or four of my firefighters had gone through there and they're like, we can't really necessarily find it. But go ahead. That we found like a little cracked relief valve or something along those lines?
Yeah, it was in... The call came in just that there was a smell of gas or propane inside the building. And I think they had some after-school program stuff going on. It was after-school was out. But we got there and we have the right equipment to a certain degree to be able to detect these things. But this leak happened to be small enough that our equipment doesn't pick it up. But there was whiffs and you could smell, so we just stayed in the boiler room. There's a lot of gas and you just start tracing lines and looking and it was... It looked like a relief valve. It was a line that came up and fed back into the main line. It looked like a return valve, but turns out that... And so it had popped off, so it wasn't connected anymore and that's where it was leaking from. But it turns out that's a redundancy in the system and if there's ever any gas coming out of that, then it's bad news to start with. So chief did the right thing by... We have equipment and we can make initial responses and ideas, but without Intermountain there, we can't definitively say, yes, this is clear and safe for anybody. So he got right on dispatch called Intermountain and then Brian from Intermountain that came was just coming off the Middleton call, actually. He was just headed home and then had to bypass and head to our school. And he found... He was able, their equipment is more sensitive, which we've talked about getting more sensitive equipment, but we've come away from that with, we don't need the training for that. That's their job, but we know when to alert them. And so, yeah, it turned out well.
Yeah, so that little broken piece, it was just like a little return. They repaired it with the school. They had the ability to repair that. But then when Brian got there, he was able to find out that that should never have gas in there. And so then he kind of traced the line back and we were just... We weren't going to leave until our school was safe. I mean, it's a school, you know? But we do the same thing for anybody's residents, but that's just something we weren't comfortable with. And so he traced it and he's like, hey, there's a valve on the outside of the building that has a flammable amount of gas in there and it should never have gas in there. But it just... It really took going the extra mile. Thank you for asking. I totally forgot about that call. But, I mean, it really took going the extra mile and just doing things right. A lot of times you can get complacent, but in law enforcement and in fire and in EMS, you can't ever be complacent. And we really did... I really questioned, do we really need Intermountain gas? And I just stuck to my guns on that one and... Because I knew they were busy and all that. But we stuck to our guns. They came there, they found a significant problem at one of our elementary schools and we were able to take care of it, so, yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Canittle.
There's been a lot of cool stuff tonight. Probably the coolest is that it's Chief Kunkka's birthday today, so that's all I have. Wish him happy birthday. Do you have any questions for me?
How old is he?
52.
All right, there's no engineer, so I'm down to number nine adjournment. Is there a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Right. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?